Book called Today Matters and he highlights 12 things I just want to go over and mention to the board. And he asks these questions. Is your attitude a plus or minus today? Are your priorities keeping you focused today? Is your health enabling you to succeed today? Does your family situation provide support today? Is your thinking mature and productive today? Have your commitments been kept today? Have your financial decisions been solid today? Has your faith been active today? Are your relationships being strengthened today? Has your generosity added value to others today? Are your values giving you direction today? And is your growth making you better today? So today really does matter. The work we do on this board matters. The work of educating students really does matter and just want to encourage all of us to use our time wisely. And with that, I'd like to open with the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent way to start the morning, Mr. Dodd. Thank you very much. We need to adopt the agenda, but I do have a couple of items that we need to add for good cause. One is to approve an agreement for services and mutual responsibilities between Citrus Micro School and the Citrus County School District and also to approve out-of-state travel requests for Danita Eaton to attend the Florida Consortium of Micro Schools. And so I would ask that. And then I also am going to just add a item regarding a letter request for the school board. And we can add that just prior to Attorney Legal Matters. And actually, we can add all of this just before Attorney Legal Matters. So if I can get a motion to include those items.
I need to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent with the additions of the agreement for services with Citrus Micro School, out-of-state travel for Danita Eaton and any other requests on our agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Balfour, to approve the agenda as recommended by the superintendent with the additions of the micro school mutual responsibilities agreement, out-of-state travel, and a letter request. Any questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Board, for us doing that. Any citizens' comments at this time?
No, sir.
No citizens' comments. Good morning, Mr. Johnny.
Good morning. Good morning. I'd like to request the Board's approval of the instructional and support recommendations.
You can just give us an extra minute here.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate you giving them yesterday. Very nice.
Whenever the Board likes, the Chair will entertain a motion.
I need to approve the instructional information and support services.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bryan, to approve the instructional and support recommendations as distributed. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
And we can take the... Mr. Mullin, I don't know if you're going to do this, approval of the mutual responsibilities? Or...
Yes, sir. I can squeeze a bit.
Okay. I'm sorry. And I think everyone has a distributed copy of each of these.
You talked about the agreement with Micro School?
Yes, sir.
And you approved the last board meeting for us to move forward with that position. This allows Micro School to pay for her travel. There's travel that they're going to send Ms. Eaton to so she can understand the concept of the school and the model that the school works under. And they're willing to pay for those kind of things, but they needed some type of an agreement that spelled out that she was still our employee, those kind of things. And so Mr. Bradshaw worked with the Micro School and this is the agreement we came up with in the wee hours of yesterday.
And is this for just this?
This is just till the end of the school year.
Okay. That's what I was wondering.
They have a facility in Ocala. I know even I'm just not clear why she needs to go to California when I know that there's...
They don't have a facility.
Or I'm sorry, Gainesville.
They have one in Gainesville.
So is this a seminar where everybody's going to California?
That's where they're all in the seminar. Yeah. She has been to the Gainesville facility. I think she's been to visit all five facilities that they have in Florida. But this is for... This is training that they're providing for everyone.
Is Micro School, it's not just the five that are in Florida, correct? They're part of kind of a subsidiary? Or is it just the five?
They have...
Their base office is in Ocala, Florida.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was going to say. I didn't think they were just Florida.
Okay. So we're... Question of course to us. And it's liability if something were to happen to her, or is the liability involved?
She's still covered under ours. She's been temporary duty for us, so she's still covered under our temporary duty.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to approve the out-of-state travel request for Danita Eaton to attend the Florida Consortium of Micro School held in Oceanside, California, March 3rd through 5th, 2015.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Bryan, to approve out-of-state travel request for Danita Eaton to attend the Florida Consortium of Micro School held in Oceanside, California, on March 3rd through the 5th, 2015. Any questions or comments? And again, this is a zero financial impact to the district. Micro School's paying for this, correct?
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
And the next one is the agreement service contract is the agreement that Micro School needs in order to do that.
Mr. Mullin, Ms. Bryan, I believe asked it, but just for, again, clarification. This is just the agreement through the end of this year. This is not a long-term...
It's just a... Just an agreement to get us through this school year.
Okay. Any other questions, Board? All those in favor?
You need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for services and mutual responsibility between Citrus County Micro School of Integrated Academics and Technologies Incorporated and the Citrus County School District.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve the agreement for services and mutual responsibilities between Citrus Micro School of Integrated Academics and Technology Incorporated and the Citrus County School Board.
I've got a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So this is the contract. The vote occurred earlier and this is the final contract.
We approved the charter back in January. And then we voted again this evening as to put our address liaison to Micro School. And so this document really to allow Micro School to reimburse this agreement for track to... Correct. Right. We'll enter into a new agreement regarding responsibilities for this year.
Okay. I just need just a minute more just to look over this.
No problem, Mr. Brown. I think, and go ahead.
Right now, what we're trying to do is identify those students that are fifth-year, would be called fifth- or sixth-year seniors that are out there that never graduated and that aren't enrolled in school. Ms. Eaton has tracked down, I think, 98 so far that she's been able to find that would be eligible for this program. And there she's trying to make contact with those parents and get those kids enrolled. We meet with staff and Ms. Eaton. We have a meeting this week to talk about those processes and procedures for how we're going to get those kids enrolled and how we're going to articulate between the schools and the Micro School.
That's quite a first. She's tracked down. When she started, she was...
I gave her three. I hope she got them.
And just as a review, the first thing that happened is we had a charter school application that we approved. The next piece then became an approval that we did for a position as a liaison. The next thing was the superintendent, I believe the superintendent has recommended and we approved, I can't remember if that's taken place now, Ms. Eaton, for that role.
Correct.
So that's the third piece of this. And then this is the fourth piece now, which is an agreement of mutual responsibilities between Ms. Eaton and the Micro School.
She's our employee, but we're... She's... They're wanting her to travel to understand how the school functions and how the school operates and the model they use. And we want them to pay for that.
And she's still an employee of Citrus County Schools. And this goes February 1 through June 30?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Good. You can... Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dodd, for requesting that time. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Okay. And Board members, because we are in a special meeting, I wanted to take this opportunity to address another matter. I'm going to hand out copies again, if you would, of first, a letter that we received from the Board of County Commissioners regarding a disappointing change in action that they took limiting the school board's voice on the Citrus County Planning and Development Council. And I'd also like to hand out a copy of a proposed letter that I would like to get your approval of. And so please take a minute, if you would, and look it over. I was shocked and quite disappointed to now have the Board of County Commissioners, after I thought we were starting, hopefully, to move forward with a better relationship, to have this new limitation put on us. This is evidently as a result of the builders lobbyists complaining regarding the school board's input during the planning and development committee. In a second, I'll ask Mr. Bradshaw to explain, but there is a statutory obligation for us to be on that committee. There is some differencing of opinion perhaps as to the role that we have in input. I believe I shared with you all a copy of some feedback that we had received from, or that we requested from other people in Mr. Dixon's position around the state. And I provided some of that feedback to you. Basically, all but one of what we received back have had a relationship similar to what we have been doing in practice for quite some time. I believe that... And I'm just looking at... At this point, what the school, what the Board of County Commissioners is saying is if we have any other input that we want to give, we can be, again, like everyone else. And we can come to a meeting and provide input at that time. But other than that, they want the school district to be seated and not to be in their place at that board meeting any longer. I believe that limiting Mr. Dixon or any school board's voice on the PDC will ultimately have a negative effect on students and school safety. And I also believe it will have a negative effect on the taxpayers. I'm not sure what they're afraid of. We have had a longstanding relationship that I believe has been beneficial. I can... I'm struggling with the fact that we first had them not want to meet with us regarding input on impact fees. They have asked to remove concurrence from the inter-local agreement, and now they're removing us, our voice, from the Plan Development Council. I just think we cannot not respond to this. And I am concerned because I believe we have an obligation to our community. I also want to make it clear that we have had a strong respect and appreciation for Mr. Dixon. He has served this school board admirably. And I am very bothered by some of the implications in the way the school, the way the Board of County Commission referenced the school board's input. And I wanted to make sure that we also went on the record saying how much Mr. Dixon has represented our voice and I believe represented it well. So I would ask for some input if you have on this. Otherwise, I would like to send this letter on to the Chairman of the Citrus County, of the Board of County Commission. And Mr. Bradshaw, did you have anything else to add to this?
No. I mean, what they basically did was they... They basically limited any involvement from people who were involved. Pursuant to the statute, the school board is allowed to have a liberal plan of development as a non-building. There are other districts that have counties that allow them to be a building member. How to be a building member?
I don't think since we've been on.
What they have done is they've basically limited input from the school district representative except for what is specifically defined in the statute. So they've basically taken away any involvement from the school district except for how it may be designed in the statute, which is contrary to how we do it. Just being... They look at the legislature and set up what's there. Last year, it was a specific topic in the House on the way to the school district. So it's a statute. And it's not...
I believe they can reference having Mr. Dixon leave his seat and sit. And sit. He can sit in the audience. They knew they could remove him from the room because it's a public meeting.
And once he stepped, they said, oh, yes, it's...
Microphones. They need to look into their microphone.
It's, Wes, it's actually in the letter from the Board of County Commission. It's right... If you can move this out of here just a second. Here you go.
It basically says that... Can attend meetings of which the agency considers comprehensive plan amendments and rezoning that would, if approved, increase residential density and property that is subject to the application. So outside of anything that, if approved, would increase residential density and property that is subject to the application as that affects the school district.
So basically, the commission and the school board let talk, sorry, talk and communicate about floral city and the... Soon as you said that would be allowed or not.
Yep.
And they saw our input, so they can't see, not see our input anymore. We can't respond. That makes no sense.
Are you asking me my opinion?
Because we're just trying to offer information that can be to the good for both of us. Information we, both groups can make base decisions on.
Well, I think, and if you look at concurrence also, this is basically anything that is not specifically, you know, in the statute, they are limiting if they have the option. Because that's what happened with concurrence. And the currency issue went away years ago. I don't know if there's another county that has done away with concurrence.
I think we found that there were three in the state that had...
It's a small number.
Yeah.
So, I mean, whereas if it's not specifically defined in the statute or ordinance, there's not going to be an expansion of responsibilities or abilities from that at this time.
The consensus of the commissioners who made the consensus.
There was basically no dissent. There was no dissent by any commissioner. I encourage you, if you haven't looked at the tape, but there's, there was no dissent by any commissioner.
So essentially, they're saying that they want to take groups with groups. Totally out of the picture, even though we're supposed to be running school systems and it's supposed to be spearheading, we're supposed to be making policy. They want to take that group out of the decisionary when it comes to things that affect us if it's going before the county commission. Sort of like the doc and not let the patient say anything, still with the room and he guesses what's wrong with it. Still makes no sense to me. I don't understand this.
Well, I don't think they're totally limiting us. I mean, they're only going to limit Mr. Dixon to his input on residential development. Is that right?
That's, yes, but that is unusual within the state because road safety, we have no input. He's not to sit on the board during that time.
And Roger, if you're so concerned with...
He would not have input on that. They want it to be that if there is residential units involved with increasing, he can sit, he can come to the meeting at that time. Other than that, he's not to be there in that role.
It's only on comprehensive plan amendments and rezonings that, if approved, would increase residential density and property that is subject to the application.
Right.
Outside of that small, small backpack group.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, I respect Mr. Dixon tremendously.
I think his input is valuable. I mean, I would think that board would want someone like Dixon to be able to comment on different areas.
And Mr. Dixon worked for the county, so you have respected both sides. So you certainly think that you'd want someone who lived in both countries to be able to get input on both.
Well, he worked, but not for this particular...
Mr. Dixon, I think, comes with a great deal of institutional knowledge that I can tell you as a private business owner, when he was in his role as Developmental Services, I valued being able to do a project, knowing that Mr. Dixon's input often made a project successful. And he was always interested in doing what was in the best interest of the community as well as the citizen trying to do something.
I understand the value and the strength of Mr. Dixon's historical knowledge and his voice when it comes to long-range planning. I served on a long-range planning committee as a school board representative and have heard his, his voice multiple times. Looking at the letter that is, of course, as far as consideration and what I've heard are multiple reasons to have that voice in the forefront. If we could include those historical success stories within the context of this letter to add a little bit more substance to why we need to have that communication door wide open between the two entities, I think that would create, for those new commissioners that don't have a, have a real deep understanding of what's happened in the past, it would give them a point of reference for discussion and maybe, maybe give us another opportunity to sit at that table. So looking at where we are at this point with that draft, listening to the input that we've shared, if we could bullet point historically what's happened in the past, the way it used to be operated, and help drive home the need to keep that, then I think we have some...
I'm sorry. Did you want, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. No. She's... I'm looking for my letter. Because if you're going to modify it, you need to modify it today. Make everything in there that you want in there because...
The terms.
Because otherwise, if you don't want to sit today, you have to bring it back at a later date.
Okay. Listen.
Yeah. My concern is I don't think we should be delaying this anymore.
Well, I am on the same page, so let's talk about the book.
So, yeah, I, that, thank you, Ms. Balfour. That was my only concern was I do think time is of this.
I'm waiting.
And I apologize only because I've, you know, I needed to wait till, and I know you, this board understands, the community may not always understand. We can't communicate until we're in a setting like this. So if we could maybe, and I know between Mr. Blocker and Mr. Mullin, you've both served, I think, as his supervisor over the last number of years and probably could quickly come to some of those...
And again, we could send it to all of the...
It was. It would, thank you. It would, it would go to each commissioner as well as it will go to the, to the attorney for the Board of County Commission as well as the administrator.
Okay. So after the paragraph, we've got one, two, three, and a fourth paragraph, if we can insert a fifth paragraph that would support the reason for the continuation of the current structure in some sort of a format of, we would like to request that we continue the current structure of communication based on the following historical points of reference and then bullet point those. So looking at what was discussed here, what has the most meat that will help close this communication gap?
I think paragraph three covers a little bit of what you're talking about.
It's broad.
But you may be able to modify paragraph three and...
Okay. Good suggestion.
This was just because it's already, unless you want to move that paragraph.
Well, no matter how you look at it, we're in two pages. The second page looks good. We can move that. If we can, even Mr. Dixon may have, Mr. history, he might have on the points of reference.
I think right now the gentlemen are convening over there, trying to give us some of those, you know, some of the... And I was going to say Floral City, I know, is, is one that we have talked about.
The red light on 486.
The red light on 41. Yeah. But the... Look at Remainer Elementary.
Judge is going to come up and address some of the projects that we get in head joint operations.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. And again, I would like to make sure that this is said. Mr. Dixon, we value what you have done on behalf of this school board.
I really appreciate that. I was very surprised that the Board of County Commissioners took that position. It's disturbing, you know, that they don't want to hear from their own staff, you know, much less their former staff. But the projects that we have worked on in recent years, most recently, I think, the Crystal River High School, Turkey Oak entrance, the County Road 486, school board purchase...
I was just going to say, I thought Mr. Bradshaw was marking that one.
Well, the first one was Hernando Elementary Bus Loop.
So at this point, given in the category, you're looking at transportation. So how we overlap, it's not just a school-related issue. We also overlap in transportation. So bullet point the transportation, anything that falls under that would include...
Right. We have coordinated and worked together on a number of projects. Hernando Elementary Bus Loop, I think, was the first one.
I want to remind everybody that we gave, what, out of the acres at Hernando, we, the school board, we gave the county some acreage out of the goodness and kindness of our hearts. What were we thinking?
I think it's important to remember that, you know, what is in the best interest of the community is what we need to be doing regardless. I mean, and I think that these commissioners may have a different perspective on, on what's best for the community, but in, in the end, you know, we're going to need to do what's best for the community and have a good relationship. But we have worked together on a number of projects that have benefited both the Board of County Commissioners and the Citrus County School Board financially. Hernando Elementary Bus Loop, Crystal River High School, Turkey Oak Drive entrance, County Road 486, school board property and road improvements, Floral City Elementary wastewater treatment plant expansion, just to name a few in recent years.
I appreciate that. I tell you what, is there an opportunity here, Mr. Chair, that we can, at some point in the day, give them a chance to sit down and talk? And then we can...
What we can do is, I think I can do this, and I'm going to ask Mr. Bradshaw if that's correct. If I can suspend or recess this part of the meeting, go into the workshop, that would allow us to be able to keep the meeting open. So what I'm going to do, and just for clarification of the record, I'm going to recess our current meeting, allow us to go into the workshop, and then let some of that language get worked out in that letter. And then sometime before the end of the day, we'll reconvene, approve the letter so that we can do that. Mr. Dodd?
Yes, I just had another comment on the letter too, so if I could try to do that.
You'll go, absolutely. This is the time.
I was just going to say at the end, you know, we have a common goal of keeping Citrus County a great community for everyone. It's the last sentence.
Yes.
But then it goes on to say it serves no purpose for our boards to work against each other. You know, I would kind of like to change that more to positive, say something, it is our desire to work together to achieve this goal. I mean, I don't see us working against them. I mean, it's more appears that they're working against us.
Thank you, Mr. Dodd.
But we're not going to work against them. So I would like to say that it is our desire to work together to achieve this goal. And then I think Ms. Balfour mentioned about, you know, what are we asking for? And I know that it says, we're asking you to reconsider your actions. Should we come out at the last sentence and say, hey, you know, we are asking your board to restore Mr. Dixon's position and input on the PDC? I mean, at the...
We can. I think, keep in mind, I would also say, and I'll, I'll give this back to Mr. Bradshaw in a second. One of the ways that other districts have been addressing this is through the inter-local agreement to say, we're wanting, you know, regardless of, we want our practice to be this. The inter-local agreement is in flux right now because... because the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners has removed concurrency and basically thrown that back at us. Mr. Bradshaw is reviewing that interlocal agreement right now. I can tell you from what I'm seeing, I'm still not overly thrilled with what the, in fact, I think it's getting worse with what they're suggesting, they, the Board of County Commissioners in that interlocal agreement. They're wanting to strip all of this out. They do not want input from us. I'm sure there's going to be some issues that come forward that the Board of County Commission is gonna need to partner again with the school board. We have always, for the betterment of our citizens and students, wanted to work with Citrus County School Board, I mean, with the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. This is making that very difficult. It is certainly giving us now having a reason to pause. And I see Mr. Blocker just stood up.
Just piggybacking what you said, I mean, it just goes, they have a real need in Floral City for sewer. And we partnered with them to, in fact, work together to enhance and increase the capacity of the sewage treatment plant at Floral City, to then allow them, through their local agreement, to take ownership of that so they can now hook up some of their business owners right there in Floral City that have issues with their septic because they have to get it pumped every day. So we are always willing to work in what's best for the community and work with the county. So those are the type of things I think we need to impress upon the letter.
Reiterate. You need to be aware of it. You've got three new commissioners.
Because they came to us, they came to us for years with issues with Floral City and wanting us to work with them to help them out.
And how did we fund that, in part?
The increased capacity was funded through impact fees.
Hmm. And, and how much, how much collection of impact fees have we started getting this month from February?
I don't know what it is right now.
I'm sorry. I knew the, I knew the answer to that, Mr. Blocker. I was.
You never, you never ask a question you don't know. Carly, did you get all that honey?
So I think it's very important to impress upon them that, you know, we're looking to help in this situation, not to hinder in this situation.
Well, I don't want to create an adversarial position.
I think it's already been created.
Well, but we, the way we want to.
With recipients of it.
Right. However, looking at it from a positive perspective and through the eye of education, because that's, that's what our forte happens to be, I think it's very important that we bring those commissioners up to speed with the historical points in this letter. And then as a voice, keep moving forward with that very, very clean, concise message.
Well, the, the reason why it concerns me not to have, like, a seat at the table is if there's an issue, right, and I've talked to some of my colleagues around the state, and they do vary in the way that they communicate and how they coordinate a lot, a lot of bigger communities than we, we have here, but things that go in around schools that can be, issues that can be mitigated if they're brought to the forefront, you know, heliports, prisons, you know, other land uses that can have impacts on schools with regards to the use itself and transportation, you know, how do you mitigate these issues? And if you have somebody who understands, you know, how these things all affect each other, you know, you can, you can address those early on, and it saves a lot of time and money if you, if you have the, the ability to do that. You know, there are some districts that just respond in writing, you know, when they have an issue, they just send a memo to the Board of County Commissioners, to the Planning Commission, and they have that included in the packet. But that doesn't really do as much as being able to be there and discuss the issues because they may not even read it, you know, if it's just something in the packet, which is what we would do. We would still submit, you know, our comments in writing, but I think it's better to be there and be able to communicate one-on-one or back and forth.
Mr. Dixon, I think that brings up an important point because I think one of the responses that will probably be sent to us in conversations individually with commissioners would be, "Well, you still can have input. You can go to the meeting and say what you need to," or "You can submit in writing." Mr. Dixon, could you explain, though, like as we're sitting here on the board, the difference between a member of the public giving input and then what the board, the planning board does after that input's done, so that this board can understand why it is more critical to be on that board than simply to give input?
Well, the, the public portion of the meeting is at the beginning. Usually the applicant comes forward, they state their, their case, you know, they provide new information if it's available, then they take public input for those who are in favor and those who are opposed, then they close the public input for discussion by the board, then the board members discuss the issues, and then they decide how they want to vote. And so that's the difference, basically, is it's a, it's later in the process, you get to discuss it with the other board members. And I think that the issue that the commissioners had the concern about was impact fees. I think the fact that I discussed the impact fees after the public portion was closed, because I cannot honestly think of another situation.
And, and again, if you could remind the board, that was, there's a recommendation by the PDC regarding impact fees that's requested.
The Board of County Commissioners, and then they, they act on that. But the purpose of a planning commission is supposed to be to vet the issues and to get the public input, to look at the facts, come up with a recommendation, or a series of options for the Board of County Commissioners to consider. That's, that should be the purpose of the planning commission. And they should also have the ability to do long-range planning and bring up issues of concern for the community so that those issues can be brought to the county commission. So I think in that respect, it's important for the school board to have, have input into that.
You know, two business applications that people would not understand, too, that also has quasi-impact to residents and our student population, hotels. We have a number of students that end up living in hotels. Campgrounds. Campgrounds is another place where we, in fact, I believe, have one or more campgrounds that we have buses that stop at. Those would not be part of input that's, that's permitted. So what I'm gonna do then is, if we could have staff, we're gonna, we're gonna recess then this portion of the meeting. I'm gonna ask first, but we'll recess this, and if, if the staff can assemble those comments and then come back to us with a new draft for that letter later on in the day. I believe, and I apologize, I've gotta go back to my agenda because I lost it with all this conversation.
You have recessed the portion.
No, 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 that's, I was just gonna say, I apologize. Was there anything, or any other attorney legal matters?
Yeah, I'll.
Okay. So then with that, if there's no objection, I'm gonna go ahead and recess the special meeting at this time, and then I'm going to go ahead and open this up to our workshop. And I believe, interestingly enough, we're, Mr. Dixon, it's going to go to you.
Yes, this, the.
Excuse me one second. Ms. Lynda, did you have something to?
No, 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 I was just saying.
Okay, yeah. And thank you, board members, for that important impact input and discussion in modifying that letter.
Good morning, board members. Today, the, Mr. Mullen with Duncan and Associates is here to give you an update on the impact fee study. And I wanted to just take a moment to kind of, you know, explain the, the status. Right now, we have a moratorium or a suspension of school impact, or all impact fees that was effective February 1st. And the, that's gonna stay in place until, I think, two years. We're gonna agree on a methodology or a formula to, to determine whether or not it should be reinstated. But in order to reinstitute it, the impact fee study has to be up today. So the update has to continue forward. The Board of County Commissioners had its workshop on school impact or on all impact fees last week, and Mr. Mullen made a presentation to the, to the Board of County Commissioners and carried forward the recommendation of the Planning and Development Commission, which I believe they voted to accept all of the PDC recommendations in their ordinance. So the purpose of bringing this back to the school board as a, as a group is mainly because it's been so long since you have had the opportunity to see the report, things have changed a little bit. Not a whole lot, but there have been some changes that have been made since, I believe, February of 2014 is when it was last before the school board. And also, Mr. Dodd was elected, and he has now had the opportunity to ask the questions that you've all, you all have asked regarding the impact fees. So we wanted to bring everything back to you so you have the opportunity to see everything and hear from Mr. Mullen, who is a national expert on impact fees. So please take advantage of the fact that he, that he's here today and ask him any questions that you may have. And then the public hearing for the impact fees will go to, I believe, April, when it's scheduled. And if you have input, you know, you can forward that by memo or, you know, however you choose to do that. But I just wanted you to have the opportunity to see the whole thing before it goes to the final public hearing and to understand why it's still going forward when they're suspended. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Mullen.
Mr. Mullen. Welcome to the Citrus County School Board.
Thank you. Nice to be here. Uh, let's see if I can get this presentation out. Okay. So my way of introduction, I'm Duncan Associates, I'm vice president of the firm. I have a doctoral degree in urban regional planning from the University of Texas in Austin. Our firm has been involved with impact fees for a long time. The founder of our firm, Jim Duncan, was growth management director in Broward County back in the late seventies when they adopted the state's first road, well, first non-utility impact fees, not non-water wastewater impact. So I think there were roads and parks, the original ones. And we have, we have worked all over Florida. This shows sort of a combination of our clients, our current and previous clients, and those of Kenley Horn, who is a subcontractor on this project, who helped us with the transportation part of it. I'm just gonna give you the, essentially present the same presentation that, that I gave to the Board of County Commissioners so you can understand what they heard. It's, it's almost identical. And then at the end, I'm gonna talk about, a little bit more about, specifically about schools, what other school districts or other counties in Florida in your area are, are doing. First of all, let's make sure we're all on the same page about what an impact fee is. It's a regulatory fee. It's not a tax. It's more like a user fee. It's a one-time upfront charge, paid typically a building permit or certificate of occupancy. So it's not existing development doesn't pay impact fees, charges only in new development. It's based on a predetermined formula. It's got a fixed fee schedule. It's not a negotiated process. It's used only to pay for capital costs, not for operations and maintenance, and only for capital improvements that, that actually expand capacity to accommodate growth. And that last one can be a little tricky, and we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit more. So legal requirements, impact fees have, have been essentially developed in Florida based on the police power of local governments to protect health, safety, and welfare of the public. They weren't, there was no statute. I mean, we have a statute now that's, that just has a few certain additional requirements. But the basic legal framework for impact fees in Florida was established by a number of court cases, Broward County being one of those. I think, of course, that, that, that one got legislated from the early ones. And, and basically, the, the rules that have come out of those court cases are, number one, you don't charge for a higher level of service, which is never really a problem with, with school impact fees. You earmark those fees by the type of facility. So if you're charging a school impact fee, you spend it for schools. You spend it to provide reasonable benefit to the fee payers. So in some cases, this means, for example, the county has park and road impact fee benefit districts that they use to ensure more benefit. Typically, school impact fees are countywide, and, and you're not, you can spend the money anywhere in the county. And then, as far as I know, that's pretty, pretty universal. But you have to spend it on capacity improvements and et cetera. So that, that's, that's how you show benefit to the fee payers. You don't want to double charge, so you need to give credit for other taxes. Because new development is gonna generate some property taxes. Some of that property tax could be used to help build schools. So they're paying, in a sense, in one way. They're also paying through the impact fee. You don't want to pay double charge. So, so then you provide revenue credits in the, in the fee calculation. And then the statute provides a couple of additional requirements. One is that the fees be based on the most recent localized data.
Which of those four is the developer's actions? What is that exactly?
Well, okay. Well, that doesn't apply to schools so much. But if a developer donated property, donated a school site, for example, then he would get credit against his fees. So that, that kind of credit is sort of a case-by-case basis if they.
We've had that done.
Yeah, yeah. So instead of, so then they wouldn't pay fees or they'd get credit against their fees. So the statute provides, the, the fees should be based on the most recent localized data. That's kind of a, a very general standard. Not, it's not real clear exactly what that means. There are a number of, of counties that continue to charge impact fees and have not updated them in, you know, over 10 years. So, but typically developers are not challenging those, you know. But if you want to increase fees, it better be a pretty, a pretty recent study. And, and as, as Chuck noted, you know, that, the, the timing of this, of course, was, was of the, of the impact fee suspension, right as we were, you know, completing the study, essentially. In fact, well, doing it right before the, the adoption of the study, is so unproblematic from that point of view because, you know, the study is current now, pretty current. But in a couple of years, if the fees come back in a couple of years, that, that question may be raised. So, and then the statute provides that you need to, need to provide at least a 90-day notice of fee increases. Whether that would apply to a suspension going away is, is a little unclear. We've had some, some counties have taken the position that, you know, they, they want to make sure there's, you know, the suspension goes away and they say, "Well, we need to provide notice." But it seems like everybody's been on notice if, if the stat, if the ordinance says, you know, this suspension goes until this date's certain, and then the fees are gonna come back. Anyway, that, that can be somewhat of an issue. The current types of impact fees that Citrus County charges, you know, there's obviously a range of them. Roads, so this shows, the, the chart there shows the current single-family fees. Roads and schools are both, have been adopted at 50%. This was, of course, before the suspension. That's what the fees were. And then the rest of the fees were at 100%. So even at 50%, you can see roads and schools were the big fees. So understandably, home builders, of course, non-residential doesn't place school fees, but home builders do, and universally, they don't like school fees. A little history about impact fees in, in Citrus County. In 2006, consultant firm of Tindale, Oliver, and Associates did a study. Those fees were adopted in 2007, and that's where the adoption of roads and schools at 50% originally happened. Of course, then, that was right kind of at the peak or at the beginning of the, of the housing crisis. By 2009, the county commission was concerned that, or thought maybe that reducing road impact fees would help stimulate growth. They reduced them to 25%, so they reduced them by 75%, not a way of putting it. So they're collecting only, well, they reduced them by half because they were already at 50%. They reduced them down to 25%. they were already at fifty percent. They reduced them down to twenty-five percent.
I mean, what's the difference behind that? You reduce the road fees to stimulate its growth?
Exactly.
Why? Why would it stimulate growth? Don't walk on roads or have roads? I don't understand.
Well, the idea is you'll get more construction because it's less expensive.
But people drive on roads and build those houses, so...
Right, right.
I guess the question is, is does, is there a study that supports that theory?
There, there is, is, is...
That stimu, that reducing creates stimulation?
I don't find any evidence that there's any correlation. I mean, we did an analysis back in two thousand and ten, Dr. Nicholas from the University of Florida and I did. And we looked at the school, at, at the counties that had suspended or reduced their fees significantly, like at least a four thousand dollar reduction, and found no, no significant difference between the rate of building permit issuance before and after for those compared to counties that had not reduced or suspended fees. Uh, and, and anecdotally, you know, you can look at different counties and see the same trend, you know. Often, there's a bump, you know, right after the suspension, when people were holding off that we're gonna get a building permit anyway. I mean, that's, that's natural. And then right before it ends, you might get a, a little surge. But, you know, if you smooth that out, there's no perceptible difference. You compare it to, like, Florida as a whole, building permit trends in Florida as a whole, it, you can't tell any significant difference. So, um, no, as far as I know, it's, it's just, you know, intuition, well, our, our hopefulness. I mean, if one thing local governments can do, they can't do really much about the economy. Not that that necessarily does anything about the economy, but something they can do that they could say, "Maybe this will help," you know. So, I mean, and, and a lot of counties did that and were, you know, desperate to do something. But it doesn't seem to have had an effect, the desired effect, let's say. Um, so then in two thousand and ten, so they reduced them by fifty percent. Then they eliminated the road impact fees completely in two thousand and ten, but, but they hadn't touched the school impact fees. They were still at fifty percent. In two thousand and ten, we did an update study, and those fees were adopted again at fifty percent. So the fees came back in two thousand and eleven, the road fees. Uh, and then in two thousand and thirteen, we started this update study. It was initially completed, the, the date on the draft is June two thousand and fourteen. And, you know, the process takes a while to get through. Uh, so here we are in two thousand and fifteen, and as Chuck said, in February, starting in February one, all these were suspended for two years. And then they said they'd look at it in a year to see how it's working. Um, and, you know, likely permits will be up some way because they're going up, you know, statewide. Uh, and they may look at that and say, "Well, I guess it's working." So...
But again, you're, you, when you look at that, though, you have, and that's unfortunate what happens. One looks at oneself and says, "We'll see, we did better than we did." But there isn't, but you're saying, when you also compare against the trend throughout the state...
Right.
Is, is you've gotta give some comparison to that. Is, is the trend in the state a same, similar percentage?
Yeah. I mean, if, if, if things are picking up statewide, nationally, you know, how can you attribute it to the fact that you suspended impact fees? But that's something that, you know, I don't think the commission, the current commission really wants to hear. But anyway. Uh, so that's kind of a little background, historical background. Uh, the updates that we made and some options that we did in, in as part of the study, one is we did, looked at, single-family currently is a, three size categories, and that's been in effect since two thousand and seven. Uh, there was some desire expressed on part of the Builders Association that, that we go back to a flat rate. So we calculated that option for the, for the County Commission. Uh, in our initial scope, we, back in, we, we did a tiered transportation fee option. We did that back in the, the two thousand and ten study. Uh, we did it again. We, we redid that analysis. That's what Kenley Horn helped us with on this, this analysis, this update. Um, the Builder Association, of course, prefers the tiered fees because very little development is gonna happen in the short term at least, out in the rural area. Uh, so they would get lower fees in the urban area. Um, anyway. And then we did, we, we made some modifications to the study to make sure we could do, the county would have more flexibility to spend some of that transportation money on multimodal improvements. In other words, more than just adding a lane to a road. Um, I mean, already you can do intersection improvements, improvements everybody accepts that that's a capacity expanding, signalization, that kind of thing. But actually using it for bikeways, pedestrian facilities, that's not part of a road widening project, for example. And then finally, on the school fees, we did make a modification to the student generation rates. We looked at the long-term, uh, growth projections for Assisus County in terms of the, uh, school age population versus the, not, versus total population, and, and made an adjustment to take into account the fact that, that, I mean, not only in Citrus County, but in Florida nationally, it's an aging population. We're not gonna have as many school kids per capita as we have today.
You just talked about a, a micro school that were bringing in the services, students who are above the normal age that wouldn't be in the regular school. Are situations like that figured into your calculations? It's very loose, so it might not be...
No, no, not at all.
That, those ninety-eight students, and it's pretty, yeah, I mean, at one school, it's just...
Well, it's interesting. That, that, that really is new to me, right now. I, I had not heard of this.
Yeah, and then, and then that's, just so you know, there's, there's about five different locations around the state in, in areas, 'cause it's a growing trend of concern and issue. So I'm sorry to...
And then we talked, of course, talked to them about the tiered transportation fees, which ultimately they decided they didn't wanna do, once again. Uh, the, the student generation rates, the long-term versus the, what, what currently, you know, it's about, currently about two point two, less than point two, about point one eight, um, public school students, non-charter students per single-family unit in Citrus County. We expect that's gonna decline to more like point eleven over the long term, and we're talking, um, twenty-five years or so.
When you said non-charter, are the charter people, are they considered a, a private school people considered or not?
No, not, not, just, just the, uh, non-charter public school students, right.
Again, that's the trend of maybe for the future that has to be looked at.
Non-charter school? 'Cause, yeah, I was gonna say, 'cause in communities, there's such a growing number of, of students. And we haven't quite seen that in Citrus County's example, but throughout the state, there's a large number going into charters.
Right, right.
Which, which is funded by FTE.
Yes, but, but you don't, the school boards don't pay for the capital facilities for those students.
It depends. It depends on the contract. Yeah. That's a, that's an interest, that could, that could end up being...
Well, there are, there are, what do you call, what, in-school charter school, I mean, you got your freestanding independent charter schools, but, but some charter schools actually start up in school district buildings, and maybe, maybe part of a building. So those we would count, yes, because, I mean, they're, they're basically, you're housing them.
Clancy, this particular, the student generation rate seems to be always a hot topic with the builders lobbyists. This is where they always want to discredit the study and to, you know, reference that the school district, in particular Citrus County, is not having any time. We've never had students' generations increase. And I mean saying that a little facetiously, obviously, but you've used, and if you could explain again to the board the data that you use, because I think it's important, because it's not like you kind of just wake up one morning and just pull this out of a hat, this data. I think you try to use the most relevant current data source available. Maybe you could share something about that, so that there, this board can have some confidence as to those, and understanding of those numbers.
Well, we, we kinda have to reference what VOE projects. I'll talk about that a little bit at the end, about their projections. Um, you know, your, your, your staff may be more familiar than I, but it, they don't seem to make any sense to me. But we do, we do kinda have to, you know, it's an official projection, so we show that projection. It's showing, uh, for, for you guys, in terms of capital outlay, full-time equivalence, continued decline for another, well, I guess now it's about four, three, three or four years. Uh, but then it's gonna pick up, according to their projections. Um, and, and that's what they, and that's what they harp on. And I've, I've tried to tell them, the commissioners, and, and that, you know, you have to look at the long term, you know. If, because, I mean, this is very typical. The school enrollment tends to be much more cyclical than total population growth, because it's, you're looking at just one demographic age group, you know, and so that age group can fluctuate over time. Um, and, and if you're not collecting fees when you're not having student growth, and you don't have the money when, when, when you get into the up cycle, uh, you know, you're behind the eight ball. But...
I've got a question on that, this graph right here. I'm not really sure. I understand the two thousand and thirteen start point for the two lines there, the total population of five to nineteen-year-olds. This is a projection, obviously, going out, but where do we start at that point? Can you just explain that to me, on the two thousand and thirteen?
Right. This is all, this, this data is from the Bureau of Economic Business Research at the University of Florida. So the two thousand and thirteen is their, was their most recent estimate of what the, what that population was, both total population and the five to nineteen-year-olds.
Well, our total population, though, is more than twenty-eight thousand of...
Yeah, I'm not, you're right, you're right. I'm not sure what this, the scale seems to be off.
You didn't have a growth of twenty-eight thousand people, so I'm just wondering if that's the, that...
You know, nobody has noticed this before. Oh, well, no, the population, oh, okay, I know what happened. The total population is, is shown at a different scale. It's, it's shown as one-fifth. So that's only showing, so to put it on, so I could...
Times it by five.
Rather than, but the actual total population, I, I wanted to get the two, the two lines close enough together, so that you could actually see them. 'Cause if you did it, you know, you know, way down here, you can't really tell. So kinda put them on the same, in the same small area. So the, so this is really, so the population is just showing, actually, it's one-fifth of the population. So if you look, so, so a thirty thousand population is really, what it's showing on the graph here is thirty thousand is five times, is a hundred and fifty thousand.
So the five to nineteen-year-olds is, is the total. There's no one-fifth. It's the population.
Right.
You put that as a one-fifth to show the trend.
Right, right.
So it really is not the right numbers. It's just the trend, okay?
Yeah.
It's kind of...
And typically, the way you would, you, you know, you see this done in, in other charts is they'll have, you know, the scale for the, for the school-age kids would be on one side, and, and the other scale would be the total population scale. Um, but I don't know how to do that in Excel, so, so I didn't do, so this was...
And then on the right, the student per midshed, single-family unit, right now...
Midsize.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 'cause current...
I'm sorry, I can, yeah, midsize. So right now, what does that currently mean? Point one eight, maybe? Is that...
Right.
What does that mean for me, to tell me? Does that mean there's...
So for every single-family home, you can expect to have point one eight, um, school-age children. So it would take, so for every six homes or so, five or six homes, you'd have a, actually have a, a school-age student or child, not necessarily a public school student.
So we're talking about, this is percentage, then? I'm just trying to grasp this now. Eight, so like eighteen percent of all of our single-family homes have a, a school-age child? Or less than one percent?
Right, that would be, that would be a way of expressing the same thing, you know.
Okay.
Okay. And then, uh, this is actually a little different summary. This is probably the better summary than the one I gave them in the, in the presentation. 'Cause the, the one I gave them was focusing on transportation alone, you know, the tiered fee thing. Um, so this shows updated, you know, the top of the, the, the table here is the updated fees. Um, and the bottom shows the percent change from what were then the current fees before they were suspended. With, again, roads and schools at fifty percent, just you could have a fair comparison. And I told them that wasn't a recommendation, that was just to have an apples-to-apples comparison. Uh, so you can see that school fees were going down by about a third. Um, road fees were generally going down. A couple of the fees, parks, for example, and libraries, were going up a little bit. Uh, but if you look at the total column, uh, all of the fees were, would be going down. Uh, but apparently not down far enough to please the commission. So, um, and this gave them a, sort of the historical perspective of, of where the fees have been. It shows roads, schools, and then the total amount. Uh, the first set of bars shows, um, what, what the fees were in two thousand and seven, after the Tindale Oliver study was adopted, with roads and schools at fifty percent. And then the two thousand and eleven study, after our last update, and then what we call two thousand and fourteen here, which is the date of, of the current update, what the fees would be. So the fees clearly have gone down over time, the fees that were calculated, the fees that were in, in place. Uh, but we'll see where they actually go.
Mr. Clancy, with regard to road fees, do you, is there funding, or do you calculate the funding of the gasoline sales tax that the county collects? Um, does any of that go towards what would be quasi-impact fee fundable road improvements? And my, and my question, or my overall answering is, of course, they have alternative funding for, for example, those capital expenditures, wherein the schools portion, you know, we don't have that extra capital amount.
Right. They, they have some other funding source, although the gas tax funding has been going down, you know. The, the state funding's been going down, so, um, funding's pretty tight on roads, too, all over.
But they do have a, a taxing, an additional tax that they're collecting, where, like schools, we do not have an additional tax for that, that we get to collect. Other counties, for example, Marion County has a, an additional millage rate for capital that they're able to generate. We do not have, other than the statutory one-point-five mills. And in the case of the county, they have an additional amount that they're able to collect.
Right.
So when they zero themselves out, they're still collecting additional revenues.
And then for the ordinance amendments, and, and as Chuck was saying, you know, it it is kind of strange that they suspend the fees, and then it's like, okay, now we're going to adopt this study. But, you know, that's, we had an election, and we had a change on the board, and so that's how things happen. But the idea is, what staff would like to do is to get them to at least adopt these fees, adopt the most current fees, even if they're suspended, so that when, you know, the suspension does end at some point, hopefully, everything will be in place. So the multimodal part, we're going to, we changed some of the language in the ordinance to allow expenditure of some of those funds on bikeways and trails. We gave them four options for the fee schedule, depending on whether they wanted to keep the flat rate, they wanted to go to a flat-rate single-family or keep the size categories. And then whether or not they wanted to keep the countywide or to go to a tiered transportation fee. And then on the refunds, we suggested, well, the ordinance proposes, the ordinance amendments propose to extend the time required for fee expenditures from seven to ten years. And, and the additional, right now, the board can extend it to ten years from the seven years. But it would extend the time, the minimum, the lower number, from seven to ten, and then instead of having a three-year extension, you could have a five-year extension in addition.
And that would be kind of retroactive? I mean, like, if we're, if we're at six years, and now it's extended to ten, those impact fees that are being held right now would go to ten?
Right.
But anything, okay.
But the county does have some park fees that were not spent within the seven years, or I don't know if they had gotten an extension. Those are, they're processing refunds for those. And so that was another part of the ordinance amendment, or the, I think it's actually going to be in the administrative regulations to set up the, clarify the process for providing refunds, because they've never had to do it before.
There seemed to be some discussion, maybe in, that with regard to refunds, that they, that whether they, it was an error, that it wasn't something they anticipated actually having happen again, was, I think, what's the way the Board of County Commission staff felt like, that there was, it wasn't necessarily that it had to have expired, but some things took place, and that it did expire. But I think that's what, Mr. Dodd, you're asking. If it hadn't expired, those monies then continue to be like retroactive, they get to get the extension.
So what, our, our impact fees that we still hold would be extended to ten years? Because none of ours are getting ready to expire.
Right, if they approve that. And odds are, they, they seem like they're going to do it. So the direction that we got from the board is they wanted the flat-rate, single-family fee. They want the county-wide transportation fee. They want to keep that. They did seem to be amenable to extending the time for expenditure of funds, so from seven to ten years, and then you could get an extension for, instead of another three years, for another five years. So you could actually go out to fifteen years. And they also were very keen on making the process for determining the eligibility of impact fee expenditures more transparent. The Builders Association was, seems to kind of, you know, it was, it's kind of a confusing discussion, because the Builders Association basically saying, you need to prove you're meeting rational nexus, you're meeting not only the dual rational nexus test, which is the test we have in Florida, but other tests that they've heard about from the National Home Builders and stuff, that don't actually apply in Florida. But the idea is, you've got to show that every time you want to spend impact fees on a project. You've got to show how do we meet rational nexus. And really, what I've tried to tell them is that, you know, the rational nexus test, you beat that, at least for the most part, you beat it when you do the study. You don't have to redo the study every time for every project. But you do need to meet the requirements for, you know, it needs to be a capacity-expanding expenditure, it's not replacement, that kind of thing. And you get into that issue of is it totally replacement, partially replacement, totally capacity-expanding, partially capacity-expanding. And they wanted some kind of, well, let's make it real clear. Here's the steps for determining that. And I told them, you can't really, you know, every situation's different, you know. I mean, they've got one issue that they actually spent quite a bit of time in the meeting discussing, which was the use of law enforcement and EMS fees for replacing their radio system. Well, they're replacing a radio system, so, but it's also expanding capacity. So that's one of those issues. Well, part of that should be eligible for impact fee expenditures. And we did some calculations to show them, okay, about eleven percent, I think is the percentage we came up with, would be eligible. But there's no real formula you can come up with to determine, determine that. I mean, you know, it just depends. If you're, you know, a similar case would be if you, if you were to replace a school with a different, a new school in a different location. Or if you're taking one, if you're doing an addition on a current school, and as part of that project, you're doing a remodel of the existing school. You know, some of that would be capacity-expanding, some of it wouldn't be capacity-expanding. How do we figure out what's the percentage? Well, you know, it's difficult. If you, if you, if you were essentially taking, putting, say you had a fire station, and you took it out of commission, and you built a new fire station, you could base it on the square footage difference. Now you've got a bigger fire station, and figure out what that percent is. I mean, you need some kind of metric. But the metric's going to, whatever metric you use is going to be different, depending on what the situation is. I mean, when you look at a sewer plant, you know, you've got that whole sewer plant issue. We had to go through that same kind of analysis. But there's no, you can't, you can't just fit it into a formula, plug it in, and...
And I would remind this board, too. We have recently had several projects with that. The La Canto high school expansion, the La Canto cafeteria expansion, where we used impact fees to partially fund those. And of course, Floral City sewer plant, which the other issue will become is, we know that at some point, we need to address expanding the cafeteria at Floral City, and expanding that, and I would assume that that is, you know, that expansion would increase capacity, and we would have an impact fee-fundable situation there. That would assume, if we were still collecting impact fees. But that, that would again be those types of examples. Each one of them is very different. The metrics involved are tremendously different. And I want to just take this opportunity to commend Mr. Dixon, who is often the one that's having to put together those detailed reports, because we make a request to the Board of County Commission. We have to use our money to fund that project, and we can only collect that impact fee-fundable amount after the project is complete. So we're on the hook for that one when this board makes those decisions, starting with...
So yeah, so I think the way it works is you pay for it first, and then they, okay, basically, you can get the money from school impact fees.
Right, we actually okay it at the beginning, and then we actually then make the request at the end. Is that correct, Mr. Dixon?
Yes, we prefer to have it approved before we do it.
Right.
Okay. Makes sense. So we proposed, we have, so following direction from the board, we drafted some, with staff, some language to try to address this issue, and to make it real clear that you don't need to do a new impact fee study for every project that you want to spend impact fee money on. But you need to show that it's capacity-expanding. And, and, and they seem to get it, that, you know, there's going to be a lot of cases where it's just very clear. And if you're building a new school, if you're adding, if you're widening a road, those are clear-cut cases. Or even if you're doing intersection improvements, you know, something like that. But when you get into this, you know, it's partially replacement, partially not, that's when you really need to do an analysis and figure out how much is replacement and how much is capacity-expanding. So this is the language that we came up with. It would require both the school board and your capital improvements plan, and the county and their capital improvements plan, when they have one of these, well, anytime there's a proposed expenditure of impact fees, to include a brief statement explaining how the project expands capacity. And if it's a, it's only partially attributable to expanding capacity, then you need to prepare a memorandum that, that provides a reasonable methodology for determining that percentage, and you don't spend more than that percentage of the cost of the project from impact fees.
I've got a question. Does the County Commission have to approve the reimbursement of the impact fee funds? Or is that just a procedural?
Mr. Dixon?
In the past, that has been more of a procedural issue enough. But I understand that one of the things that, that they talked about is having that done by resolution. And I don't know what the status of that is, but in the past, that has just been procedural. In the past, when we have an impact fee-fundable project, we go to the county, we have it approved, it's impact fee-fundable, it's looked at by their planner and in charge of that, and their finance director. We get a memo that says this percentage is impact fee-fundable, then we do the project, and we get reimbursed. In the case of the Floral City wastewater treatment plant, there's an interlokal agreement. So it was actually approved by the Board of County Commissioners in that case. And that's the only one that's outstanding, right now, to my knowledge, that we're still moving forward with. But that is actual interlokal agreement that was approved by the Board of County Commissioners. I know there's been some discussion about having all of those expenditures approved by resolution, but I don't know what the status of that is. I don't think that's necessary, I really don't. I think that's more of a procedural issue. But, I mean, as long as you meet the language in the ordinance, you know, anybody can challenge it if there's an issue. But there's been some talk about having that done by resolution in the public media.
And then what happens if the Board of County Commission, by an unpopular opinion, or, you know, group of citizens, and say, well, we don't want that done, let's say. Let's say it was, for example, they didn't want the radios to be done, and there was an outcry. They all pile into a meeting, and the Board of County Commission says, no, we're not going to do it. If they did that to a school, does that mean we don't get funded? I mean, I think that's a fair question. Or do we now have a legal remedy that we have to address?
I think what Clancy said about having the methodology in the study that's adopted by the board is important. As long as it's updated every three to five years, you shouldn't need to do a new study every time you have an impact fee-fundable project. As long as you do what's in the ordinance, and you get that approved, then there shouldn't, you shouldn't have to go through a study every time you have a project come forward.
Yeah, I think, I think the builders were wanting exactly that. The builders were wanting the, basically, a separate action by the board every time there's an impact fee project expenditure. This, what we're suggesting is, you don't have to do an analysis and show you meet dual rational nexus test and all these other tests the builders want. And they had this checklist, that was their proposal, was that you need to make these findings for every impact fee expenditure. So this was our suggestion to them, and we'll see how it goes, that they already approved the capital improvements plan. Now, this would not require, this doesn't really address the schools in the sense that it requires you to put this kind of information in your capital improvements plan. But obviously, the county doesn't approve your capital improvements plan. So this doesn't actually give them the power, not that they...
Nor do they, I think they should, personally.
I mean, they may, I don't, I don't know. They hold the impact fees for you, or do they transmit them to you?
They do both, do they not?
They, they hold them.
They hold them, okay. Well, I guess they have, they have the power there.
Yeah. Well, and that's what concerns me about if they take a board action. That's exactly what has concerned me, so...
Yeah.
They cannot say whether they can build a new school instead of, or if they approve them, the capacity of the new school, you know, setting up the county commissions, it's only the impact fee you're talking about.
Right.
Are you worried that other schools will happen?
Well, I just, I think that unfortunately, our current history with them would indicate that they're not listening when we make our requests, so...
I know there's always discussion that this big development, Citrus County, has a worse strategy than you possibly imagine. And I can't see why anyone in the world, at this point, build a house, although it's a lovely development. But it's buggity, buggity, buggy. And we were talking about the roads and using them to expand, widen the roads, or make new roads or stuff. I'm thinking to resurface these roads would pick up the building. People would build a house if they could get to the house. And I think we're a poor realtor. I can see them going out, showing property and saying things, oh, it's a lovely, lovely piece of property you have here. Unfortunately, we don't have a road to get to it. But if you're waiting, just go through the woods now, and wait, we'll probably get there. It's very, very confusing. Things that are absolutely needed, they're not going to be able to be done if there are certain rules that seem to now be dealt with. And what is the question, by the way, to the builders and the realtors? Do you know? I don't know. It would seem like they have the odds if one says, you know, let's go ahead and have some beautiful property, and that can be sold, and put a road to it. The others say, no, we're not putting a road to it.
They seem to kind of march in lockstep on impact fees, anyway.
Which is often odd, though, because, and there is, to me, a negative impact that's typically happened when you have an uptick in new construction that typically has the reverse effect on resale inventory. And so it always is perplexing to me, why they do get lockstep in. Because they certainly don't make nearly as much out of lot sale as they do on the asset.
Okay, so we'll see how all that plays out. Just to sort of give you a little sort of broad brush picture of school impact fees in Florida. This county map shows, it's been shaded in to show you in green the counties that are continuing to charge school impact fees that have them today. Although some of them are quite old, and some of them are relatively low, but...
I had heard that Hernando is being saying about impact fees.
They're, they're looking at it, yeah, yeah.
Marion County, too, is our understanding.
Yeah. So, so obviously, this, and yellow shows the suspended fees. So Citrus, obviously, has suspended Hernando, Marion, a number of other counties have suspended their fees. But a number of them are thinking about bringing them back. And this kind of looks at kind of more regional, kind of the counties that are closer to you. So Marion's got a study underway, as does Hernando. Both of those are underway. Polk County, we're doing an update for them. And then there's been news reports that the school boards in Pasco and Manatee are considering new studies. Pasco's fees are already in place at a hundred percent of the last study that was done, but they're considering a new study to update those fees. And they think they need to be higher. And Lake County, actually, Lake County has an R and P out to update their fees. They're kind of looking at something that's a little bit unusual, that they wanted to see if they couldn't have their fees come back. They just brought them back, they were at twenty-five percent. They just brought them back to seventy-five percent. Although I'm not sure that, the last time I checked their website, they, it didn't show the seventy-five percent fees. It showed the twenty-five percent fees. So I'm not sure exactly when that's going to take effect. So I'm not sure exactly when that's going to take effect. But they actually have an R and P out to look at, can we charge a higher school impact fee in the South where they're getting a lot more of their growth than in the rest of the county? So, I mean, they're aware that that's, you know, there's, the St. John's Supreme Court decision on school impact fees basically said it needs to be countywide. You can't, the cities can't opt out. The cities opt out, that kind of blows the whole thing, you know? You can't beat rational nexus that way because they're, you know, the cities are going to benefit, their kids are going to go to schools, they're not paying. It needs to be a countywide system. So whether or not you can actually charge only in a certain area of the county or, you know, if you had, if you could, if you could show that, well, the South is the only area that's growing, we've got plenty of schools everywhere else and there's no growth, or either that or we've got plenty of capacity everywhere else, you might be able to justify just charging in one area of the county.
Can I ask you to go back to the previous slide that had the map? Looking at the nine counties that have suspended the school impact fees and looking at the map showing the white districts or counties, I'm interpreting that they have never had impact fees. Is that the correct interpretation?
School impact fees, right.
School impact fees. So with that, how are those other counties, and many of those counties have some substantial growth, how are they managing the growth of the district's school populations? Do you have any idea?
A lot of them bond. A lot of them are online.
Thank you.
And they also, I know, have had millage rates, where they're also passing millage rates. And so they are, you're right, Ms. Balfour, they're using a complexity that in Citrus County, frankly, economically, we just haven't had quite that availability.
And longer schools are updated.
Well, you know, except for the Panhandle, you know, most of these counties that have never charged a school impact fee, I mean, there are some that are, I mean, Duval is obviously a populous county, but they're, the ones that are higher in growth and larger do tend to have school impact fees. Or have happened in the past at least.
A lot of those schools in the Panhandle, we have to keep them to it's in the whole county. Twenty-five, twenty-two thousand.
So that kind of gives you, and this also shows, this chart also shows when the study was done for these, for these school boards or counties, how much that's, the study calculated, what the current fee is, so you can see what the adoption rate was for the various counties. And then the 109%, I think, we did a study for Hillsborough back in 2004, and I think they've simply adjusted for inflation since then. Why, that's a little over 100%. So you can see that the fees that are being charged tend to range from $4,000 to $8,000 a single-family home. Fees that have been calculated in different studies, up to $11,000. Or over 10,000. Which is why the builders don't like them. And they are pretty substantial fees, or can be. This is just trying to give you a sense, and your own staff can probably provide you better information, but I just thought, you know, it was an exercise for me. I was like, okay, how is Citrus County different? Or how does it compare to these other counties in the region and to Florida as a whole in terms of your school age population or your capital outlay FTEs per person? So this chart compares those two, shows there's a pretty strong relationship between how many school age kids you have and how many 15, five to 19-year-old, you know, school age and how many capital outlay students you actually have. So this is taking basically the DOE 2015, which is, I guess, a projection, yeah, said to be a one-year projection, to the Bieber's Bureau of Economic Business Research's 2015 projection. So pretty close to actual, real-day numbers. So you see there's a real strong relationship there. And then I looked, and you are, you know, Citrus County kind of being on the low end. You're a little below the Florida average in terms of the number of public school students per capita, the number of five to 19-year-olds per capita. But not so much lower that you're kind of out of the ballpark. I also had, originally had Sumter on here and took it out, and Sumter is really low. About half the school age kids per capita, and one of the counties that has never had a school impact fee. But then I looked at there, looked at these two factors, the Bieber projections of growth in five to 19-year-old population and DOE's growth in COFTEs. And there seems to be almost no relationship between the two. This would be 10-year growth. So even though Bieber is projecting for the next 10 years, your growth in five to 19-year-olds is pretty low, and this is actually the counties in this one, and Florida are ranked according to the Bieber growth in school age population. So you're kind of at the low end, definitely, in Bieber's projections, but you're actually on the high end in terms of growth in DOE's COFTE forecast. So what's going on there, I do not know. I mean, you look, you look at statewide.
Welcome to our world.
DOE is projecting, there's going to be a net decline
That's right.
in capital outlay full-time equivalents. While Bieber's saying the number of four, five to 19-year-olds is going up about 10%. So maybe they're all going to be charter school students or something. Or maybe Bieber's off, or maybe DOE is being more conservative. But there's no, there's no real strong relationship between the two that I could see. So that really kind of concludes the presentation. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. I know you've already asked some, so maybe we covered all the hot topics.
Board members, I know there may have some questions. Someone to open it up to you, or...
I have a question. I don't know if you can answer, but the one-year review or what the commission said they're going to look at, what would that entail?
You know as much as I do about that, I don't know. You know, that's, that's what the ordinance says, that we reviewed it at the end of the first year. To see if it's working. I don't know.
And then at the end of the second year, they'll, what'll happen? Two-year moratorium, right? So they're going to review it in one and then decide.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what happens there. I mean, do the fees come back automatically? I would think that they would if they don't take any action. But of course, they can always extend it.
I think that is how it was written, and that was our hope with getting your study passed, was that, I think staff was hoping that it just, in theory, it would be automatic, it would come back. But inaction by their board could extend that or shorten it if within a year.
Right.
But that was our understanding, Mr. Balfour.
We're changing that.
Right. They could accept a different percentage of what the study, I believe, has, is another way that they could certainly do that.
Right. Right.
Which is the advantage of having the study passed. Other questions?
I just was wondering if it came up where the money was going to come from, that impact fees would cover the road building. Where now would the money come from? Where are they going to get that money?
I don't know what the theory is there. I think, I think the theory is that the builders are peddling, is that, you know, the new development, you're going to get more construction because you don't have the fees and that, you know, that's going to generate all this property tax money that's going to pay for all those things.
So that's a question I have, and that's a great place for me to just to add on to that. Board of County Commission has a different taxing authority cap than what the Citrus County School Board or what the school boards have. In our case for capital, we have, as you, I think, are aware, a 1.5 statutory cap for capital improvements. And we have to do a lot with that in Citrus County, from computers in the classroom to maintaining our schools to building new capacity, you know, as it is now. One of the issues that the builders will try and argue, and they've certainly won that voice with some commissioners, is to say, well, you'll generate new ad valorem taxes as a result of using impact fee suspension as a stimulus tool. My concern has been, is that the amount of money that we're able to collect of 1.5 mils would take us almost two decades to collect on, for example, a $100,000 home. Because we're going to get on a $100,000 taxable home, we would get about $150 a year. And it would certainly take, in the amounts that you suggested, you know, that we have there, would take a number of years, certainly past 10 years, to collect that. Is anything in that general theory that I'm expressing incorrect? From your understanding?
No. No, yeah, I mean, the money kind of trickles in over time. I mean, unlike an impact fee, it is a recurring, you know, comes in every year. The impact fees, you know, you just get once, but...
But in the school sense, we collect a lot less of that cap, in that cap rate. So when the builders say, yes, but you're going to get all of this ad valorem tax money, that doesn't really trickle down to us the same way.
Right. And capital improvements need to be made when the development comes online. If you're going to have the facilities to serve that development, you can't wait for the long term to collect the money. Well, I mean, you know, you could bond, I guess, I mean, but doesn't, you know, if property taxes were, if growth-generated property tax revenue increases were sufficient, I don't think anybody would have impact fees. You know, impact fees aren't perfect, but they're an alternative, you know, they're a supplement, so.
So they're thinking that the property taxes will be increased without generating the growth, or generate the monies of the growth of the property taxes up?
Right. So the other, the other argument that of course comes in, and you heard it, I think, at the last meeting, is, well, you're collecting impact fees, but there are retirees that are living in those homes, that they're going to be. So why are you collecting even a school impact fee? And I realize there's an exemption for over 55 communities. But that's argued, then argued, and it was even referenced again in that meeting that you gave this presentation at. Can you explain when an impact fee is collected, for how long is that impact fee for the life of that building and for, and what does the life of a building mean? Because, you know, if I got a collar, the life might be three years. But what does, what does that life mean?
Well, it's essentially forever. I mean, you can't ever go back and collect another impact fee on that partial property. You only get one, one time. So even if they tear the whole down and rebuild it, you're not going to charge them an impact fee. So essentially, it's just, they just pay once. And that's, that's supposed to generate the, you know, and the idea is, I mean, it's supposed to generate sufficient revenue to pay for the capital facilities required to serve that unit. And then obviously, those are going to need to be replaced eventually and maintained and all that, but that, that's not impact fees. You don't spend impact fees on that. You need, everybody, that's everybody's responsibility, the general taxpayer.
It's a concern that people have shared with me, and I think it all comes down to the rational nexus test. I think there's confusion out there about where we can spend those impact fees. And I know that law sets with parameters, the test is the filter, but I think that's an area where if we can expand the dialogue and educate people a little bit more so that there's not this gray area out there. And when there's a misperception, then, and the confusion is there, then people start questioning the integrity. And I think, I don't know, from your experience, if you can give us some feedback on how we can clear the clouds of confusion there and make sure that people understand that we are spending the impact fees and complying with all regulations?
Well, it's, I don't know that there's a way to, you know, and that's, you know, what the commissioners were asking for too. Let's, let's make it like crystal clear and everything. And, you know, if you only spend your impact fees, you know, if you're, if you're in a high-growth mode, it's pretty easy to spend impact fee monies and nobody's going to argue with you. You've got to build a new fire station, you know? You've got to widen a road. You've got to build a new school. You've got to put in a new park. But when you, when you're not growing extremely rapidly and you don't have those big-ticket capital items, what do you spend the impact fee monies on? You've got to spend them in a, you've only got a certain window of time to spend them. And so you look for the more incremental types of things. So, you know, they're looking at the radio system, replacing the radio system. So you get into those kinds of things where there is more of a gray area and more room for argument and discussion about, you know, how much of that is eligible or is it eligible at all and that kind of thing, so.
You know, it's interesting, because the only time I've ever heard the issue of that, and even during this time, people like the Citrus County Council that have contacted us, the only people that have issued with this, with the issue of the methodology and the matrix have been associated with the building lobbyists. I've not heard one general consumer, taxpayer out there ask that question. In fact, it's just the opposite. So I'm always curious that when we have been asked those questions, it's not very hard to determine that it was from directly the Builders Association, that that information is questioning that methodology and questioning that we're not providing enough information out there. Because as you've indicated, the study is really the justification already for being able to do it. We have gone to great lengths, far and above, that meets that test for everyone but the builders. And the only ones that keep bringing this question up have been the builders. And that's the only one that's brought it forth again for the commissioners. So it always concerns me that we are placating, again, the builders, empowering the builders by saying, we're going to revise everything to accommodate making them satisfied when the rest of the community is perfectly accepting. In fact, I think if the, if the community put a referendum out about impact fees, the builders would be on the short end of this stick.
Well, it's interesting too. They claim they don't pay impact fees, but they're very anxious to get some refunds. And if they can keep you from spending the money, then they're more likely to get refunds, so it's kind of an economic stake there.
There's been a question asked by several in the community that have said, has anyone checked to see if the builders have shown a difference in price on all of their homes now that the impact fees have been reduced?
I think that'd be a very valid study, Chuck. I think that would be a great study.
And I grint it, I will say, see, to me, and I come from the building industry, I have certainly made most of my living...
I'm going to break that up, but I did find...
No, that's okay. I come out of that industry. And what I find interesting is this is a marketing issue. Because some builders include it into their price, other builders have the impact fee as an additional line item that they put at the end of the contract. This is a marketing issue. And I find it challenging that we are a community that is basically saying, let's build mediocre infrastructure. Let's support mediocre infrastructure at the low... build mediocre infrastructure, let's support mediocre infrastructure at the lowest possible price, but we want to market Citrus County as the best place to live. And that's, that's a real issue that I think that this district, its community is going to have. So, and I, I know this board is, is not surprised by my feelings on this.
You're very right. Again, I keep seeing the picture of that one development, the roads all deteriorating, and some realtor trying to sell some, a house or a lot there with everything deteriorating. How, how, why would anyone buy? So we're offering, or they're providing the lowest infrastructure, absolutely, and then wanting the highest return. That doesn't make sense. Again, none of this makes sense, logical sense.
Thank you very much for your study. Thanks for sharing. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Any last questions, board members? With that, we're going to take a break until 11:00, and we're going to work on cleaning up a couple of things, and then we're going to go ahead and, and reconvene at 11:00.